For August 10th, 2023. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can former trustee Pat Flint please lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, indivisible, earthy and justice.
All right, thank you. Although the Board voted to approve Vice President Wong to join virtually under AB 2449 with just cause, due to technical difficulties, she will not be joining the meeting. However, we opened the meeting under that law and we allowed members of the public to join virtually. So that will remain in place throughout this meeting. But we will not need to do a roll call vote because we don't have anyone here virtually. Okay, so our roll call. Clerk Coffey.
Present.
Trustee Vanegas.
Present.
And trustee Pazati.
Present.
Thank you, I too am present. Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators, WSTA, CSCA and Management. Information received. Government Code Section 54957, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. Information received. Government Code Section 54957, Conference with Labor Negotiators. I was with myself, President Kirby Gonzalez, Maureen Nakamara, and that was with unrepresented employees, our superintendent and assistant superintendent of Business Services. There was discussion about the agreement. So that takes us to approval of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I move.
Before we do that, I was wondering, was there an item that you wanted to move up?
We did not need to do that because of the technical.
Got it.
Yes, thank you for that. Otherwise, we were going to. Okay, so. Okay, thank you, I missed it. Okay, so moved by trustee Vanegas, seconded by clerk Coffey. All in favor?
Aye.
I too vote aye, thank you. Okay, and tonight we do not have anything under items of communications and celebrations. So that takes us to our association reports, WSTA report. And do we have Mr. Nep? President Nep. Welcome.
Happy end of summer. I hope everybody had an enjoyable summer and it's good to see you all again, although we did see each other during the summer. But nobody knows that. I just want to welcome Ms. Autry Streck to join us here at WUSD. Very happy to work with her this week in our PBIS meeting. We got a lot done. I would just say that we should be eagerly awaiting what's going on in PBIS because we're really hitting the ground running this year. So that was really good. I'm also super happy to continue to work with Farah. I say Farah because we're on a first-name basis. And so I'm really glad to work with Farah and her assistant Stacy Tracy. I messed up the name, her assistant Tracy, which is a dinosaur if you don't know. I wanted to encourage the school board tomorrow, if you have any time, and I know it's short notice, but the board meeting's tonight, to go to any school site in WUSD and look at the parking lot. If you ever have any question about the dedication of staff and certificated in this district, you're going to see all of those teachers volunteering the week before school starts in the classroom, on their own time, on their own dime, getting ready because everybody's ready to get out there and serve kids. So I just, I like to send that message because I'm always, I've been doing this for 20 years and I'm always amazed to see my entire staff on the school site on a day when they're not getting paid for it, getting to work and everybody's eager to go. I wanted to talk a little bit about, recently in this district, there's been, this year especially, there's been a lot of opportunities for administrator increase in compensation through reclasses and through looking at comps. And as a labor representative, I have to tell you, I'm in favor of making sure we're compensating all of our employees fairly. That being said, I hope that this is something that we remember when we come to our contract negotiation in a couple of years because we want to make sure we're up with comps. And anybody who looks at local districts right now, we actually, for the first time in a while, are behind on comps. You look at Elk Grove, you look at Winters, you can look, there's a lot of places in Natomas you can look. And we're in a little bit of trouble if we're competing for highly qualified teachers at the beginning of the year. So I'm hoping we'll take a look at that. Also, reminding everybody that our organizations, in an effort to, for the first time in like 20 years, settle our contract in the year we're supposed to settle, we settled prior to the governor's revise and we knew that that was going to be pretty good. But we wanted to move forward and we thought that the district offer was fair at the time. So we're not complaining about that offer at all. But I am saying that we settled before the governor's revise and that's probably one of the reasons why we're not up with comps in locals. So just putting that out there, doing my work early. I also wanted to remind the Board that we have a lot of turnover this year. We have a lot of new teachers. We also have some new administrators. And I'm just encouraging our cabinet and our Board to keep an eye and make sure we support the administrators and making sure that we have consistency across the district and that our systems are calibrated. Farah and I will be the first to tell you that we're the first ones to hear when something is being done differently at different sites and that comes down to communication. And so I'm happy to help with that and I know Farah and the rest of HR is happy to help with that. But this is the time of the year to really think about that calibration. So. And let's see, I was really thrilled. I went, those of you who know me, and I'm not shy about making myself known, know that I've had my issues with the rollout of community schools in the district. And I'm still not exactly thrilled about the level of collaboration, not just with myself, but also with community partners and the efforts being made to find all community partners, wherever they're at, and bring them in to build that level of trust. That being said, I want to commend the district for the event that occurred at Riverbank, the kickoff yesterday. I probably sat for 20 minutes just watching kids get their hair cut because it was like the most exciting thing for me for some reason. It was just like really cool. And I know we've got a lot of work to do and I hope we can continue to collaborate in that area. That's all I have. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you so much. And that takes us now to our CSEA report. And President Gandara, welcome.
Good evening Superintendent Hildreth, Board President, Sir Kirby Gonzalez, Board Trustees. He's a hard act to follow. You would think we sat there and wrote it together. The first thing I want to talk about tonight is equity. We had a meeting, a labor relations meeting this past Tuesday. Tuesday, I informed the district that we are going to, per Article 17, start our equity. But I'm going to go in a little different direction this upcoming year. I'm not just going to look at surrounding school districts. We have to look at where our members and our employees are leaving to. They're leaving the county jobs, state jobs, private jobs. So I'm going to do a little broader scope than, you know, a custodian at Washington Unified isn't leaving and going to Natom or Woodland. You know, so we need to really see why they're leaving. And that's going to be my focus on the equity committee part of it. Also compensation and retention. We've seen over the last few board meetings, a lot of compensation being handed out to not classified employees, but to management. And just like Mr. Nep, I understand the need for everybody to get compensated. But when classified comes this year for compensation, have that same grace and the same process. We asked in our labor relations meeting on Tuesday, what is the process that management has to follow? Because we know classified's process. We have to fill out a five or six question questionnaire and explain why we want a compensation and what duties we're going to do. And we have to negotiate for over six months over less than a dollar. So we just want to know the formula. We want to know the criteria and we want to follow that for classified as well. I also want to look at, compensation has to do with my classified members leaving as well. You know, we have a lot of vacancies. And why are they leaving? Because they're not being compensated. Why are they leaving? That should be our focus along with the compensation. Because we haven't created in the last five years so many classified positions for the amount of vacancies we have. So that means the cycle is they are leaving and creating this vacancy pool. And we're not able to fill it. And then they leave and we're not able to fill it and it's because of compensation. And then this goes into our promotional opportunities. I know there's been, there's been a few, more than a few opportunities that people have taken advantage of or, you know, the process of. But I do want to focus on the promotional aspect and the minimum requirements. There is a member who resigned and her position flew yester. She left because she applied for a position that she met minimum qualifications for. And she didn't even get an interview. Per our Article 12, she didn't get an interview. And this is another problem and another issue why people are leaving. I know we want to promote growth, but we also need to understand, and I brought this in a labor relations meeting again on Tuesday, is who determines the minimum qualifications? And how is this determined? And with that, I want to thank you guys. But I am passing the mic to my VP. She has a few things to say. So I'll tell you guys good evening.
Thank you, President Gandara. Good evening Superintendent, Board President, trustee, staff and guests. I would like to start with an optimistic opening for all of us in the room. This year, I would like to have greater self-awareness in what motivates us, what grounds us and what ultimately moves us to action. I would like us to be united in what's best and fair for our employees because that's what's best for our students, whom we proudly serve. And serving students is a call to action that we can all agree upon. For it is action that we can truly impact positive changes. In that regard, I hope we have learned from the past, the collective and our own, and we do not continue down any non-productive or unfair paths for anyone. From my perspective, these are the most significant action commitments we can take. Many of our classified employees were offered extra hours last year, almost daily. Our classified employees provided needed coverage to keep students safe, fed and supported. These extra hours were provided in lieu of giving employees an opportunity to hold a full-time position. They were denied benefits and retirement. Per Article 14.5 and Ed Code 45137, these employees' rights were contractually violated by the continual bad practice of not giving them a full-time position and having them work all day long. We hope that moving forward, the district-level administration will prevent this from happening. This is preventable. On that note, any five- or six-hour current vacancies, right now, current vacancies, let's offer to our two- or three-hour employees. This is a first proactive step that we could take, that could standardize and improve not only the lives of the individuals, but also the betterment of the district. Ultimately, major retention issues, as President Gandara spoke about, creates extra work for all involved in the hiring process, payroll departments and us as union reps. The district has to stop chasing its tail with vacancies. Students also suffer from vacancies. On that note, last year, we also had an MOU for health aides, their schedules, based on the needs of sites and employees. To date, there's no MOU in place. The aforementioned problem of practice with asking our members to timesheet when they're actually needed all day will continue unless the district stops it. We are less than a week away from school beginning. Next, CSEA is aware of, quote, "projected financial hardships" that the business department shared within the last few months during a special board meeting. We would like to publicly acknowledge that over the last several board meetings, including tonight, district-level staff administration have been given board-approved raises and reclasses. These raises have had collective financial impacts of thousands of dollars. We, CSEA, actually value and appreciate the Board approving such raises, even in times of projected hardships. It demonstrates that there's still adequate funds for employee compensation. And with the district and Board having publicly stated that they have an equity lens, it would only be fair and right that when our contract opens and negotiations begin this fall, actions rooted in good faith with fair contracts will be granted and approved as well. Before I close, we would like to share a huge shout-out to all the classified employees who are working tirelessly so that schools can open on the 16th. Please recognize all of our work whenever possible. It helps them to know you all see them and care. I would like to highlight Nick Rar, our storekeeper, who's literally carrying heavy loads of material, moving furniture and delivering boxes and boxes of curriculum to every single site. Our custodians who are cleaning, washing, scrubbing rooms. Our food service staff who are preparing plans and schedules so our students can be nourished. And all of our secretaries who are fielding a myriad of requests, calls, knocks on office doors and emails from parents, guardians and community members. In closing, I love the Washington Unified School District. Our students and the staff who serve them are truly amazing. We look forward to a wonderful year together, moving forward with real action steps towards fairness and progress for the betterment of us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that now takes us into our public comments. I do have a disclaimer to read. At this time, we have four public comments. And Mario, since we are opening it up live, is there anyone on there who looks? Okay. Okay. So I'm going to read our disclosure and then the first two speakers in order. And if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Please correct me when you come up. It's Dr. Kadir Raja. And then the second speaker will be Jesse Smith and Christina Thomas. Okay. So this is our disclaimer. At our regular board meeting held on February 9th, 2023, the Board resolved that written public comments received by 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to the Board, but not read into the record during the meeting. And we did not have any public comments that were emailed to us today through that avenue. Members of the public may address the Board on topics of our Board agenda during every meeting. In addition, during regular meetings, the public may also address any topic within the jurisdiction of the Board. Please know that the Board is listening to your comments, but by law cannot meaningfully respond in this forum to items not on the agenda. The Board may limit the total time for public input on any topic to 20 minutes unless it waives the item limit for an item. Individual speakers may be limited to three minutes to comment on any topic. The Board respects the right of the members of the public to speak regarding matters within its jurisdiction. However, please recognize that comments regarding students other than the speaker's own children made during a public board meeting may be a violation of students' right to privacy unless the speaker may be legally liable. If you reference a student's name other than your own student, you may be deemed out of order. Furthermore, it's important for the public to understand that negative or derogatory comments made against district employees or others, even those made in a public board meeting, may be actionable civil defamation. Although the Board may not prohibit such comments, Board policy allows the public to lodge complaints against district employees, providing more opportunity to be heard than is allowed under the open meeting law that governs this meeting. So we'll go three minutes each for our speakers. And first, we will welcome up Dr. Kadir Raja.
Hello?
Welcome.
All right, good evening. Washington Unified School Board District. My name is Dr. Kadir Raja. First off, I just want to say thank you. Every time I hear about this district, River City High School, the community kickoff run, the revitalization project at the Westfield School, I just hear so many positive things about this district and what you guys are trying to do at the River City High School especially. So I just want to applaud you and thank you for this time. As I said, my name is Dr. Kadir Raja. The founder of Miracle University. What we are is a nonprofit organization and a dropout prevention program throughout the county of Sacramento. Little bit about the dropout crisis. So we know that there's 4,000 high school dropouts every single year in Sacramento County. And these 4,000 high school dropouts every single year produce roughly 80% of our crimes, homicides, violence, unhoused and victims of trafficking. We also know that the majority of our high school dropouts could have been predicted and identified and prevented in high school based on failing grades and poor attendance, especially in the ninth grade. That's the make or break of year when we lose so many students. And so, a little bit about myself. When I was in school, I, myself, was failing. I needed a little bit of help. I was never paying attention in class until I had the right mentors kind of help me and help me taste what success looked like and felt like. And that led to a 20-year journey transforming, as a teacher, transforming thousands of students who had six Fs on a report card, ankle monitors, kicked out to continuation, kicked out to juvenile hall, and transforming so many students that were labeled as dropouts, transforming them into scholars and allowing them to find their greatness that lied within. And my calling was to uplift those who were labeled as unteachable. And so as a result, I was recognized as Sacramento Teacher of the Year, California State Teacher of the Year. I know we have a district teacher here right here because I remember. And so, you know, really at this point, our purpose as Miracle University is to tackle this dropout crisis throughout the county of Sacramento. And so we plan to do that in two ways. We would like to partner with every single district in Sacramento County, every single high school, and do two things. Number one, we want to find, identify the list of those students, 0.0 GPA. I haven't been to school in two months. I don't know where the student is at. Students that might be in foster care. Students that might be unhoused. Students that don't have the advocate. Students that are on the pipeline to prison or dropping out. We want to identify who are those students at every high school, continuation school. Number two, we want to enroll them and give them opportunity to be in the Miracle Program. The reason we're able to transform any child and help them find their greatness is because of three things. Number one, we assign every child the right type of mentor, a culturally responsive mentor who understands how to unlock their heart. Number two, we assign them the right type of tutor who knows how to unlock their mind, their potential in their mind and teaching a way they understand. And number three, we assign every child a personalized internship that relates to their career of interest. So I look forward to partnering together so we can help all of our.
Thank you. Now I recognize your name. If you have any information as well, you're welcome to leave it right up here if you haven't already with Mr. Miramontes. Right there if you have other. Okay, thank you. Although I see other speakers as well here. So Jesse Smith and Christina Thomas, come on up. And then after you will be Tamara Eugene Raja. Oh, you'll have to, on the side of the microphone is a little. Okay, you're good.
Hello?
There you go, perfect.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jesse Smith. I'm a graduate from Pacific High School through the Miracle Program. I would like to share a little bit of my story. The Miracle Program helped me so much with inspiration, tutoring, providing transportation when my car broke down and even times when I felt like giving up. Dr. Raja came to my house, pushed me to not give up. Also, without the Miracle Program, I can tell you, I would not have graduated. When I share, when I share my testimony with generation before me, they say they wish Miracle Program was around when they were growing up. And that's why I believe the Miracle Program should be in all the schools in West Sac District to give students like me a fighting chance. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. And next we have Tamara Eugene Raja. Welcome.
Good evening to the West Sacramento Washington Unified School Board Superintendent. Thank you, my name is Tamara Eugene Raja. And I'm going to be speaking from a teacher's perspective on behalf of Miracle University. Again, thank you for your time in our efforts to listen to us in our efforts to speak and advocate on behalf of Miracle University Dropout Program to be implemented into your schools. I am a teacher who's been teaching for five to 10 years within the Sacramento area. And I've seen firsthand, like many other teachers, students struggle emotionally, mentally, academically and emotionally due to lack of support. It has become normalized for teachers to tolerate any and all behaviors within the classroom while trying to teach. I have learned that that is counterproductive and unfair for both the students and the teacher, the teachers, creating student frustration and teacher burnout. I love teaching, but I too have been burnt out many times due to lack of student support. The Miracle University Dropout Program not only is beneficial to potential dropout students, but on behalf of teachers as well. With the support of the Miracle University mentors and tutors and internships, we are able to identify the unique need of the student, meeting their needs and allowing them to thrive within the classroom as well as personally. I have seen this program for the past 15 years work for students who had no chance, students that nobody appeared to pay attention to. I have seen them thrive through the program. With this program, this program also uplifts teachers, improving teacher wellness, allowing teachers, allowing our jobs as teachers to be enjoyable and allowing us to do our jobs to enhance each student to their highest potential. We are kindly asking with deep consideration that you consider the Miracle Program to be a part of your community to enhance the wellness of your students, our teachers and our community. Again, I'm coming from a teacher's perspective. I think this, I know this program is very beneficial for teachers, allowing us to fall in love, to remain in love with the job of teaching and to really push students to their best ability. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and that takes us to, at this time, our last speaker, Paige Von Howard. And please correct me on your name if I said that. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say, thank you all for giving me the opportunity to talk to you and stand, you know, above you guys right now. Without the help of Dr. Raja, I would have ended up like the rest of my friends. I would have been a product of my environment. You know, most likely just selling items. Like honestly, nobody in my school really thought I was going to graduate. I mean, myself, I didn't really think I was going to graduate. I just was slacking around. I was ditching school, coming to school when I wanted to. And the only person who really did have faith in me for real was my counselor. And then before my counselor, you know, after my counselor, it was the help of Dr. Raja. He was able to let me know that, you know, you're not in this by yourself and that you still have a fighting chance and you're not going to just go through it without failure. Like you're not just going to fail, you're just going to, if you're going to come here and go to school and if I'm here with you and standing by you, I'm going to make sure you're going to succeed. But he called me, make sure I was up every day, doing what I was supposed to do, coming to school on time, not slacking. I mean, even when I was still slacking, he still, he didn't even get, he did, he did kind of get mad, but it wasn't like a mad, it was more so like, do your work, come on, I told you, like, you know, do your work. So I still, when he did even do that and, you know, offer me his time and, because he didn't have to do it, you know, he didn't have to, it's not his job to, he doesn't have to wake up and call me, tell me to go to school. Like no one's paying him to do that, but he still seemed like, okay, I still don't want this, you know, young brother to fail and, and just go to school and just seen as a product of an environment and just another failed person to the, you know, school system. So when I met him, I was actually at a friend's house. I end up getting a call from him. Honestly, I didn't know who it was at first, so I didn't answer the phone. And I was kind of surprised when he called me because he told me he wanted to be my mentor. And I was surprised that he wanted to be my mentor because like I said, I was slacking around, I was ditching. So him wanting to be my mentor was kind of surprising. And I kind of didn't really understand why he wanted to be my mentor because what I was doing in the moment, I wasn't, honestly, wasn't doing that, I wasn't doing the best thing at the moment. I was, you know, taking my time, whatever. I didn't answer.
Yeah, that's to wrap it up. Okay, thank you for giving your time this evening and for sharing with us. And I know our district staff will look over any information you leave or communications you send. Thank you. And that also leads us to, there is another public comment, Danny Langford.
Welcome up. So I have a couple of questions. My husband and I drive around town a lot. He helps with Meals on Wheels and we just like to drive around our community and see things that are going on. I get a lot of questions about how are children going to be transported to Westfield? And before I get the blank glassy-eyed stare from you, the Brown Act does allow you to, to direct staff to answer our questions or to get back to us. And I'd appreciate knowing that so that I can answer these people that are coming to me because they say that they can't get through to the district office to answer their questions. I'm also very sad to see the back of West Moroaks. West Moroaks was not only my husband's school, but it was all three of my boys' school. I worked hard as PTA president and we did a lot of work as the PTA in that campus. While the beautiful shiny new area is nice, the back field that's dead is horrible. There's no reason it can't be watered just because the park stuff hasn't gone through. The kids should be able to use that for PE. Are they only using PE and play on hard, hot laptop and concrete? The detention pond looks horrible, just like I said, when you guys were putting it in, the weeds are like this high. Why? That we're right before school starts. It's that way though a lot during the year. That makes me sad. Also, the whole kindergarten side wing that you ripped out, all those gorgeous shade trees that my children all benefited from, there's hardly any shade. And those trees that got planted are going to take forever to grow. I'm disappointed in how River City looks. We drive around there a lot because we live out there, but we drove around the back and it's just hideous, all the weeds again, this high or taller on all the back of the building, all by the fencing, all by the detention pond. It just looks horrible. We should have a premier school. Other school sites off in other communities look amazing and they're proud. And you as a board should want that to install and push that pride. And when our grounds don't look good, we don't look good. Another thing I'm concerned about, and I've voiced this since Measure Z was on the books and even going to be voted on, there's no way looking at Westfield that we're going to have enough money for Westfield, Elkhorn, and a performing arts center. What are we going to do? Because that's what you promised this community. And there's no way with all the construction that you're doing that that's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think it is a appropriate time to share with the community, Westfield busing, even if how that communication is going out to staff. Yesterday, there were many students too and families that we saw at the community school event. So if a family is asking, how do they know about the busing route for their child or their, at Westfield, what would be, what would we want to tell them and express to them? Dr. Hildreth?
Yes, I know our team, our transportation team has been working diligently with school staff and getting information out to families. So I'm going to ask Assistant Superintendent Monique Stovall if she can give a few details about--
So specifically to our Westfield busing, should they have questions? Our busing routes are on our website. If they go to our website and look under Business Services and then Transportation, the route for our Westfield families is listed on there. Should they have any questions, please contact our Transportation Office directly and see if I can find that information. We'd be happy to, maybe I can work with Yorgos to be able to put a splash on our homepage so that it's easier to be able to find that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that that is communicated to with outreach specialists and others for those that don't have access to internet and other-- Okay, that is all of our public comments for this portion. And so that now takes us, we do not have a public hearing this evening. We do not have information discussion items this evening. That takes us to our consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
Remove the consent agenda.
Okay, Trustee Pasati moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Trustee Vanegas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. And Dr. Hildreth, I know you have some words.
Yes, I just wanted to highlight that this is an opportunity you might see on the HR recommendations that our Director of Maintenance, Operations, and Transportation, Terry Souza, has retired. Terry served our district for 33 years. He has been such a great support to all areas of our district. And so fortunately, he came back from vacation right in time before his retirement date set in, and it allowed us to honor him in terms of current district staff. We had former district staff who came, and it was a wonderful way to acknowledge and recognize all of the service and dedication that he has provided to our staff and our students throughout his time here. And he's probably not watching based on what he told me he was going to be doing in retirement, but we want him to know how much we appreciate all of the work and we wish him well. And he has shared that whatever we need, information, anything, he is still here because WUSD is his family. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for that. We've been lucky to have his expertise and certainly his historical knowledge as well in this district. Thank you. And happy retirement. Okay, that takes us to Action Item One, Approval of the Amendment to Agreement with the Placer Junior Golf and Tennis for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. That is our ELOP dollars, the Spring and Summer Enrichment Programs. And that is with our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Assistant Superintendent Street. I'm Raja.
Good afternoon, President Kirby Gonzalez and Trustees and Superintendent. We are asking for the golf and tennis contract to be amended to include July services that were offered July 1st through July 21st, which were not as clear, clearly spelled out in the original contract, as well as to reflect the new weekly rate, which was, there was some misinterpretation on both ends in terms of what was included in the original contract.
Are there any questions? Trustee Pasati?
Quickly--
Yes.
Is this an amendment to the contract not for timelines, but for the amount--
It's for both.
That we agreed--
It's, it's for both. So in the original contract, it included services that were provided to students in April, May, as well as our summer program through the end of June.
End of June, okay.
In the original contract, July was to be determined. We didn't want to, we wanted to see how the program went through the summer before including July services. And in the original contract, the weekly rate was interpreted as the total amount for all sites for the duration of the contract. And, and actually it was less, we paid less than what the rate actually was.
So the question that I, I would have is, we apparently at some point figured out we wanted to extend this program. Wouldn't we have figured that out prior to July or prior to, at some point in May and April, wouldn't we have figured out, hey, I know we had a board meeting in June where we would have been able to say, hey, we want to extend here. The only thing that I, I think I want to make sure that as we go forward, looking at future contracts like this, I would rather us make the contract going forward instead of in reverse, right? Like I don't like doing that where we've already received services and it just, something feels a little bit off. So I would rather say yes, going forward, this is what we can expect. And then, you know, if we have an addendum or an amendment, that's fine, but not in services have already been rendered.
Understood.
Because what if we say no? Right? Services have already been rendered and then we have an issue.
Hundred percent agree. And I, as I was reflecting back on this, how I would do things-- I, I've been running the after-school program for eight years. I think I had more contracts in the last three months than the entire eight years. It was a lot. So I would definitely, I definitely agree and to make the contract shorter. I think what I would do differently is make the contract, the service was, was great. It was just probably needed-- So moving, I am totally learning a lot about contracts, about vendors and-- Moving forward, absolutely.
No, no, I totally understand. I just want to, you know, bear that in mind as we start moving forward.
I have a question or-- Question is, knowing the price that you have now, is this something that you still would have wanted to do?
The program, I don't know if you ever got to see what the children were doing. It was amazing. I have so much feedback from parents saying our, our child wants to take up tennis lessons or is really wanted to racket to start. So the program was great. Like I said, what I would do differently would be to shorten the duration. So it would have been maybe six weeks or eight weeks, and then we could have done something different, you know, for the following few weeks.
But what I'm hearing you say is, it's a great program, but I would not have spent the amount that we're spending, we would have--
The budget did not, we did not go over budget at all for, for our enrichment. So it was within budget. I just think maybe we could bring other vendors too, so that way we split it with different vendors instead of just one--
Students to another sport or another enrich-- For the-- Right. It's okay, I like learning. I mean, hey, we are a school district. I'm just trying to make sure that, that I know that the intent was to give kids an opportunity to do something that they haven't done before. Golfing is definitely a lot, a game that not many of our children have access to. Tennis is another one. So I'm all for it. I'm just, I think the fact that somehow the mistranslation with the contracts, yes, you had a lot to get it, but you're one person. And I know when I look at all these contracts, it's not all on me to read it all. I'm trusting, I'm supposed to trust that we are looking at everything and that if, if I'm supposed to trust you guys to read the contract and then I'm coming back into another school board meeting and saying, hey, by the way, I misread that contract. Oopsie, now we have less to do something for our kids later on. I don't like oopsies. And it's just, I just want to make sure that we are, you know, we're doing our due diligence when we're, we're doing these for our children, best interests. I get it. I want my kid to do golfing. I was like, I'll go get one of those little putt-putts and, and all for it. We just got to be careful with this because, like you said, because of this amount, now it's less for another activity or another type of thing. So I'm hearing that the contract would have been shorter, and I'm also hearing, at least this is what I'm hearing, that we would not have spent the amount that we have for this particular one.
All right. So I, I'm just reflecting back on, you said eight years of doing services. And for those of you that know, when, when I first came into West Sacramento and provided services, I think the unique thing that you've done is you do vet the quality of the program through the summer. There's a lot of districts that do not bring enrichment or vendors over the summer. They just kind of, they block that timeout. So a lot of vendors and providers don't even offer themselves because there is a gap. So what I'm hearing also is, is there was, there was almost, you know, the contract was too large for one, but there's also a lot of vendors that won't provide services over the summer just because they're accustomed to. It's not normal that a district will bring in individuals over the summer. And what I know Rahale has done is, from experience, vetting the quality of the program to then be able to extend services over the year in enrichment. So in, in, in all that you're doing, I just again want to thank you because I myself had to prove myself to West Sacramento through the summer piece, which again, because the people are accustomed to having the summer off and not being able to be a part of districts or contracts, many times it's, it's also difficult to find quality type vendors. So it's, it's a two-fold piece. So thank you for, for everything that you do. I'm in bringing quality programs to, to this district.
I just wanted to add that we did get 14, over 14 students go through three hours a day, five days a week for this duration of tennis and golf since every single-- Aye.
What I thought was funny is Rahale also forces the vendor to provide it for all the schools, meaning if you don't have the capacity, you can't get in. So you have to have like a full staff to be able to provide. And it's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a challenge as a vendor, but she ensures that all schools and 1,400 students going through a program. It's not, if, if you only have enough for one school, she won't go through, or she didn't go through with it. So thank you again for ensuring that as many students take advantage of these services. Thank you.
I think this is an important conversation, an important learning curve as, as practice. Of course, we didn't, we want to establish moving forward, but it is, it, it is completely impressive what you have done. What was it last summer? Do you, do you know the numbers? I mean, 1,400 this summer.
Last summer, say maybe we had a few hundred, maybe, maybe less.
Yeah, like a few hundred. And my own children got to participate in these programs this summer, and it, it was so special. And their friends too, I mean, saying, we want to go back, we want to go back, we want to go back. So the gift that you gave to 1,400 students, it was just phenomenal. And maybe just the thought as you debrief, you know, and think about thoughts is maybe even just a shorter amount of time, maybe still the same period of time, but just a little shorter in the day with another supplement. But it, it was really incredible and I saw everyone, they were running out there on that blacktop preparing for kids. It was, that was phenomenal. And just to share perspective of some other districts with ELOP dollars, these, this beautiful gift of money we have to serve kids that is meant to enrich and do exactly what was done this summer. You know, another district I know, they had a school site of 700 kids and did not have a Rahale. And that school, their ELOP, what, you know how many kids they served? Nine. Nine. Nine kids. That is not what anyone wants to hear. I mean, so this is phenomenal. And I know it was a big learning curve for all and, and using space, classroom space and everything else. So, so noted and we will, and I think also in, as you look at your processes, it can't all be on one person because it's just too much. So spreading that out and you can't take all of that, those pieces on because I know that your summer was very busy. Yeah. Okay, so with that said, then, okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Pasati. Do you have a second? Okay, seconded by Clerk Coffey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye to vote aye. Thank you and good comments from all.
Thank you.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have-- Hold on, I just want to make sure, am I looking correctly? Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. I apologize for that. That was a glitch on my end. Thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, thank you. I appreciate it. I apologize for that. That was a glitch on my end. Thank you. Okay. I see this now. So now I'm looking at it. I want to make sure I get this right. So now I'm seeing action when I see two. Oh, I, I see here. Okay. Item P. Okay. Sorry. It's been a long day for me. So now I see the next one. So we had at P. Five, I'm reading that correctly. We'll have the next. Okay. Thank you. I apologize. I had it on, on the screen. I have. Okay. But that was a resolution. So I think we do have to do a roll call vote to your point. So. Oh, that, no, the next one is a
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking the wrong one.
I blame trustee Pizzotti was throwing.
I was a head one. I was a head one, man.
I know. And a minute ago, we were going to do a roll call vote for all of them. So, okay. Now we're going to action item number two. Thank you all for bearing with us. This is the adoption of resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, three, two, the certification of signatures for the Office of Public School Construction, and that is Assistant Superintendent Business Services Monique Stovall. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. This evening we are requesting approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, dash, thirty-two, the certification of signatures for the Office of Public School Construction, also known as OPSC. In essence, what we're asking is to be able to add our new facilities director as an authorized signer for documents related to OPSC, which is construction documents.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Okay. So that is moved by trustee Venegas. Seconded by clerk coffee, and this is a roll call vote. So trustee Venegas.
Aye.
Clerk coffee.
Aye.
Trustee Pizzotti.
Aye.
And I too vote aye. Thank you. No, on number five. There's not a public. Thank you for um, so that now takes us to action item number three. This is adopt the resolution number two, three, two, four, dash, three, three. This is the certification of services. And again, with Assistant Superintendent Business Services Monique Stovall.
Thank you. So we are requesting approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, dash, thirty-three, certification of signatures. We are requesting to be able to add our new Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services as an authorized signer for our district.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve? Okay. Moved by clerk coffee.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Venegas, and this is also a roll call vote. So trustee Venegas.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Clerk coffee. And trustee Pizzotti.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. That now takes us to the approval of revisions to and extensions to July thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven of the superintendent's. Oh no, I'm sorry. That takes us to for approval of the employment of certificated employees with provisional permits. And that is our interim assistant superintendent of human resources. And fair, I realize I have not said your last name out loud. So please correct me in this. Um, Ubed, well, just lead me through it. Can you tell me your last name, how you pronounce it for me? Ubadala? Ubadala? Okay. Ubadula. Okay.
Ubadula.
Got it. I'm writing it down. I apologize for that. I should have asked you ahead of time. I hadn't.
No worries.
Okay.
Good evening, President Kirby Gonzalez, trustees, superintendent Hildreth. We are requesting, um, that the trustees acknowledge the receipt of application and individuals who will be applying for provisional credential permits. These individuals are our newly hired educators. They are, they are provisional internship permit candidates. They are currently making progress to earn their credentials in alignment with CTC's requirement. There are currently nine individuals who will be working with the HR team to meet the requirements to earn their credentials.
Okay. Are there any questions? Okay. No questions. A motion?
Move.
Okay. Thank you. Moved by trustee, uh, Venegas, seconded by trustee Pizzotti, all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you so much. Okay. That now takes us to item, uh, number five, and this will have a public comment. And so first I will do uh, the reading of this. The approval of revisions to an extension to, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven of the superintendent's employment agreement, and that is Dr. Cheryl Hildreth. And, um, here's our statement. The board is taking action to approve the extension and amendment of the superintendent Cheryl Hildreth's employment agreement. Pursuant to the California Government Code, prior to taking final action, the board must report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of executive compensation. If approved, the board will extend Dr. Hildreth's employment agreement to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, and take action on the graduated increase in the district's contributions towards retiree health and welfare benefits. The approximate maximum, uh, the approximate value of the grad, maximum graduated contribution, assuming all annual uh, medical premium increases of three percent um, is approximately fourteen thousand dollars per year. So that is the health and welfare benefits. Okay. And that now takes us to a public comment, and that is, uh, Dani Langford.
Well, I can honestly say I see why you guys were hiding the contract. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand retroactive to July twenty twenty-two. That's a seventy thousand dollar bonus, basically. Plus a four point two five step every July, which is retroactive two. That is an eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollar and fifty cent bonus, which that's like eighty-one thousand something. Being that her contract was two hundred and thirty thousand originally. I, I've, I've only had a chance to skim through this since you guys waited till after closed session to post this. Again, I don't understand it. Again, this calls for evaluation and quarterly. It does not call for the June twenty-second, June eighth, May twenty-fourth, May eleventh, and the special meeting, July fourteenth, closed session meetings where you take her behind closed, closed doors. That is violating the public's right for you to do business in open session, according to the Brown Act. This contract, when the community sees it, they're going to hit the roof. Guaranteed, guaranteed. Nothing personal, nothing personal. But when we see our teachers and staff asking for raises and not getting it, and you guys doing this, this is insane, just insane. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dani Langford. I want to, uh, make it clear to the public, um, there was still discussion in closed session. Um, and this reflects, um, what is posted now reflects that, which is, um, why it is there now. And I also want to make it clear that what I read out loud um, is the only piece here of the track changes that were made in addition to the contract. The rest was the existing contract. Okay. Um, so with that, do I have a motion?
I, I just wanted to make a comment to that. Had, you know, people been present, um, or saw what the extension was last year, um, you would know that the only part was the addendum in the track changes a version that we added. And additionally, we didn't talk about, we may have listed it on the agenda, but we may not have had enough, uh, board members to actually discuss it. So we decided not to. And then we mentioned it when we, when we talked publicly about it, we did not, uh, talk about this in closed session. So I just want to make sure that's very clear. So people understand that that's not what happened. So every time I hear this time and time again, every year, I'm tired of hearing it. So with that, I move.
Okay. So move by trustee Pizzotti and seconded.
Aye, second.
Okay. And seconded by trustee Venegas and all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. And, um, this was supported by our entire board. Okay. And that now takes us to the approval of the employment agreement between Washington Unified School District and Monique Stovall for the position of Chief Business Official, retroactive July first, twenty twenty-three, and terminating on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And I will read from that as well. The board is taking action to ratify a new employment agreement with Monique Stovall and to promote her to the position of Chief Business Officer effective July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Pursuant to the California Government Code, prior to taking final action, the board must report a summary of a recommendation for a final action on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of executive compensation. If approved, the CBO base salary shall be two hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars with a four point two five percent increase for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year in recognition of additional duties, including, but not limited to acting as the superintendent's designated me and providing professional support to other senior management. Beginning with the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, the CBO shall receive a four point two five increase if her performance is evaluated as satisfactory or higher. In addition, the CBO shall receive a master's degree stipend of one thousand per year, an annual car allowance of three thousand, six hundred, and is eligible for the same health and welfare contribution paid to other management employees, which is approximately fourteen thousand dollars per year. And I believe, um, we, also have a public comment on this, uh, Dani Langford.
I haven't had a chance to look at this one because it was just uploaded. Um, I do want to say if this is incorrect, what I said, then you need to update the website because that's where I got the, the numbers from. And Sarah reported out discussion of agreement in closed session. So one of you isn't saying the right thing. And so I can't comment on this. The CBO seems to be doing a great job. I would like to have been able to see the contract before the meeting, just like we always have. Chris Mopanidis, his contracts were always listed on the agenda so the public could see it. Linda Luna's contracts were always listed on the agenda so the public could see it. So that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any comments or emotions?
I move.
Okay. Moved by trustee Pizzotti, seconded. Okay. Seconded by clerk coffee and all in favor.
Aye.
I too vote aye. Thank you. Okay. That now takes us to, we have nothing to, this evening for board governance. So that now takes us to our board and superintendent comments. Dr. Hildreth.
Thank you, President Kirby Gonzalez. Uh, I want to say good evening, trustees, colleagues and community. And it's hard uh, to believe how quickly the summer has gone by. I think President Nepp, you shared that, like, we're, we're back. Um, and we're less than one week away from the start of our twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I want to thank everyone who is a part of our Washington Unified family for all that they are doing in these final days to ensure we have a great first day for our students on August sixteenth. We have already heard how our certificated staff has jumped in, our classified staff has been working tirelessly. Our administrators, our management and leadership. Our families have been communicating with us, letting us know what more they need to know to make sure everyone has a great first day. And thank you to the board for supporting all that we do for our students. Um, we've been meeting with administrators in the past week. We've been able to meet with our labor partners to ensure that we are focused on providing supports as we plan to welcome our students. If you go around the district, you see that campuses are being cleaned, our class sizes are being monitored. Professional learning collaboration time is taking place for all of our employees. And that's what we do. That's what we're here for is to support our students. And I'm wishing everyone the best of heading into next week and looking forward to seeing everyone at the district kickoff event Monday and Tuesday of next week, August and fourteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth. Next, I just want to highlight our community schools kickoff. So it was just yesterday on August, August ninth, that our team along with our United Way Capital, California Capital Region, hosted our community schools kickoff at Riverbank. We had nearly eight hundred attendees and we were humbled by the turnout and grateful to all of the volunteers, our community partners, our staff, our community schools committees that have been working on this since we even thought about, uh, bringing this grant forward. We had vendors and, and everyone worked tirelessly over the past month to give our community an idea of what we mean when we say community schools. We had over twenty-five of our high school student volunteers helping out. Um, we gave out over five hundred, like drawstring bag backpacks, pencil pouches and sharpeners. We, uh, were supported by some other elective officials. Our county superintendent Garth Lu- Lewis was there. We had our United Way Board President, uh, attended. We had some representatives from, uh, Congresswoman Doris Matzui's office and um, Assemblywoman Cecilia Aguilar Curry, I believe. Um, it was just great. And I believe the highlight for everyone was just seeing families being supported. It really was, what do you need from, we were able to give away food. We were able to um, have parents if they wanted to sign up for the, um, making sure we had information to support, um, free meals and I think everyone was amazed by the haircut. Just the pride and the happiness for the students who were sitting there, getting their haircuts. We all know the, the nerves you have on the first day of school and what you're going to wear and how you're going to look and all of that comes up. So for families who were worried about how they were going to ensure that their children have the same level of confidence that all the other kids had, that little haircut, those are the little things that we're trying to think about when we talk about community schools. So it was just wonderful. So we had over twenty-five vendors and local organizations. And this is just the beginning because that grant, that we worked together with, um, WSTA and CSEA to, to get it submitted and, and funded. That's, that's six point seven million that is coming into our district to serve our students and families. So the additional services that we will be able to provide with that amount of money, we can already see that this is going to be a change maker for Washington Unified and for West Sacramento. And it's, it's just really exciting. We're also sending out a survey to our vendors, to our organizations to gather feedback. Um, we're going to continue to have meetings of how do we expand this? What do we need? What, what more? It, it's really about what more can we give? We had a residents who were able to, to tour our community school room to see what things look like. And as a reminder, we have four community schools and they will be located at Riverbank, River City High School, Westfield Village and Elkhorn Village. So more to come about this initiative that we're also excited about and appreciate everybody's support. Then just today, we had, uh, orientation for all of our new teachers. So it was very exciting to see our new teachers who were coming to Washington Unified and the excitement that they felt and the nerves that they shared. And I shared that, guess what? We all are nervous for day one because we want it to be great. And so we want them to know, we are here to support you because when you get great support, it becomes a place that you want to stay. And we believe that. And so we asked them, just wanting to get feedback when we, we hear about what are our retention strategy? Part of it is, what are we doing well? What do we need to do better? So we asked our new teachers, how did you hear about this position? So one of the things, there's four places that they said they hear about. Um, the positions either on Edjoin, going to job fairs from family, friends or on social media. So that's giving us ideas of where we're getting traction. So we can continue that. In meetings that we had with our new hires during their onboarding process, we asked the same question. So how did you hear about us? Why are you coming here? So some said that they were referred by friends in their credential program or their credential program recommended our district. So who, who are our partners? Um, their families encouraged them to select WUSD as their employer because they heard great things about the district such as the district, the support the district offers does not compare to other districts. And I think, uh, President Kirby Gonzalez, you highlighted that and talking about what we're able to do with our EL, or what we asked to be done and you all supported with our ELOP fund, that that didn't happen. Everybody got ELOP funds, but how districts decided to Everybody got ELOP funds, but how districts decided to use those funds to support students was vastly different in some areas. They shared that the HR team will go the extra mile to accommodate our new teachers. HR team does site visits. They help with credential applications and make sure that people are onboarded as soon as possible. Our new hiree shared that WUSD encourages professional development, and they support that not only as a district level, but they support it at sites. And that the district focuses on retention. Teachers stay in their assignments, they are hired in even after their second year because we know that the statistics talk about the importance of supporting your new teachers in their first through third years for them to want to remain in the profession. So that support, when you're just coming into someplace new, is critical in saying, is this a place where I feel welcome? Is this a place where I feel valued? And is this a place where I can ask for support and not feel like I shouldn't be asked? So that feedback is wonderful, and we're working with HR to be able to provide the same level of feedback as we onboard our classified employees. Because this is about supporting all of our employees and getting this level of feedback is something that we really, I'm sharing this because that's the reason that we want to ask people for their, so that we're able to do something with. Another piece of exciting things that happened in the last week is we had National Night Out. We want to extend a big thanks to our partners at the West Sacramento Police Department for organizing that wonderful community night out on August 1st. Our team had such a great time joining so many fun neighborhood gatherings throughout the community and seeing so many of our students before the start of school. We saw people had dancing in the streets, they had food, they had water jumpers, there was one block party where they had a live band. I mean, they went all out. It was amazing. It was really a true way to show community. But I want to give a special thanks to our gracious WUSD bus driver, Jody Blevins, and everyone who made it special. Jody made sure we got to where we needed to be. She's, you know, do you need water? Are you okay? I mean, it was top notch. So I know how long Jody has been in our system and just the way that she treated us, I know that's the way that she's treating our students who she is bringing to and from school every day. Last Saturday, we had our Yolo County Children's Alliance Back to School Resource Fair. So we partnered with our YCCA and other community organizations, and it was the giving out backpack. It was just a time for parents and community to come learn about resources that are available. We have our Westfield Village School Modernization happening. And so if you have not had a chance to drive by the Westfield Village property this summer, please do so because the campus is nearly unrecognizable because the school modernization project is in full spring swing. Our crews have been hard at work since June 5th, breaking ground, doing demolition, and laying new infrastructure for the new campus design. Our team has also been sharing drone aerial flyby footage of the progress, which the community can access on our social media and YouTube page. So trying to get the word out of what's happening because this investment is so important and we want to make sure that people know, as much information as we can share, we want to do. Last but not least, as we prepare for school, we really want to remind everybody that there is supposed to be a heat wave next week. So we want to think about having our students, reminding them to drink plenty of water, reminding our staff to drink plenty of water, especially those who have more outdoor job assignments than those are indoor. We want people to avoid prolonged exposure to the outdoors as much as they can. And we will communicate helpful heat wave information at the start of the week, and more information is also available online. We will be checking in with our school administrators just to make sure if there needs to be any changes in schedules because of the weather conditions. We are monitoring that very closely, and we want everyone to know that we are watching the weather forecast. It's always this time of year, this week has been pretty cool, but of course, next week is the big heat wave. And I think that's it. So with that, I will turn it over to the board.
Okay, thank you so much. Trustee Vanegas, you ready?
My goodness, so much going on. No, yeah, thank you. Thank you for all the work that we're doing here in West Sacramento. I've been, it's been the busiest summer of my entire career life. I've been working with educators, working with students, and there's, you know, I always do my best to bring best practices to this district. But this year, I really noticed that people were asking, what are we doing here? There's really is a buzz around this district. And I think one of the things that is contributing to that, you mentioned new teachers. I did a, I've been doing workshops this whole past week, pre-service dates with staff. And with new teachers, the one thing that they were looking for was a sense of belonging. You know, we think about support, we think about, but the sense, like how much a sense of belonging means. And I think that's where West Sacramento has a unique position, to be a small district. And it can be very powerful, it can be very, it's a reason that, you know, young educators are looking to be in West Sacramento or a place like West Sacramento. So maybe even that's something for just marketing and advertising, like the fact that it's a smaller district where they won't be, where they will be valued and noticed from day one. I mean, in hearing other teachers, that's something that kind of came to mind that I know, you know, we value here in West Sacramento. So yeah, just excited and with it all. We, you know, this month, we also talked about what wellness and well-being means for educators. And we talked about burnout being common, but not normal. You know, burnout shouldn't be a part of it. When teachers come to work, we shouldn't send them back home. You know, they come to us as the best version of themselves, and we don't want to send them back home as the worst version of themselves or stressed out. So just again, on well-being, well-being is a state that you can operate in. You can feel sad and be well. You can be frustrated and be well. Just the importance of putting our educators first, because I know they're putting the students first. And I can feel it this year that it's, we're hitting, we're really focusing on our staff. And thank you for putting our teachers first. And I mean, that is the idea with everything we heard today. I do just want to ensure that we're extremely grateful to our teachers and the people who are serving our students. That's it. Gracias.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Pasati.
Yeah, thank you. I first wanted to say thank you to all the employees that have been working throughout the summer. Like, first thanks first. Let's just recognize that while many employees were able to have the summer off, let's, you know, just say thanks to those that were actually doing the work and prepping for the school year or actually had work to do during the summer. So I just want to give my gratitude to them. That is something that, you know, I think often goes overlooked is, you know, we still have people that work during. I also wanted to say the two-by, or the community schools event was amazing, like absolutely amazing. President Kirby Gonzalez was there and was able to say a few words, as well as Superintendent Hildreth. I just, I was shocked by how many people turned out for that event. Just absolutely floored. And they weren't just from the Riverbank area, like, they weren't from the Elkhorn area. They were from Westmore Oaks, they were from, you know, Bridgeway, they were from everywhere in the district. So there was a ton of community involvement that was from across, and that just kind of made me smile. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that has worked tirelessly to get that up and going. And, you know, we look forward to having Riverbank going throughout the year as well as River City for the community schools. Also wanted to say that we did have a two-by-two meeting, which I know President Kirby Gonzalez will touch on a little bit more later. Two of the topics just off the top of my head were, we mentioned the potential for doing some land swaps with the city, as well as the need to talk about safety as well as behavioral threat assessment and things. Oh, National Night Out. Thank you for bringing that up because I wanted to say, for the first time on my street, we actually had an event. We had a stop, a National Night Out stop. And while it was small because it's not a major thoroughfare street, it was still nice to see my community members on, you know, my area actually get together and gather. We're not the most social crowd. Like, I know my next five neighbors, but we got to see actually an assistant soup from Business Services in Oakland, who actually lives down the street from us, right? Like, that was very cool. I got to meet some people that I didn't actually meet, you know, know before. So it was just, it was a great night overall, and I'm just really thankful that, you know, we were able to have such an interesting National Night Out as there was plenty of water slides and bounce house type stuff that we've done in previous years. And I want to say congratulations to our new CBO, Monique Stavall. Thank you for your time with us in the district and, you know, this new position is certainly a step up in responsibilities and roles. So, you know, we are so excited to have you be a leader in our district. So congratulations to you, and congratulations to you for staying, you know, another year. So we've got you for another year in the contract. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that and, you know, make the comment that, you know, while many people seem to think that, you know, we don't take our due diligence by having our attorney, you know, handle the way we do things when it comes to superintendent evaluations and how we report out and when we meet and if we're going to do everything. Everything we do is usually with the guidance of our attorney. So, you know, while, you know, many people in the public may think they have, you know, a JD and our attorneys and education, I'd just like to say that we play by the book and, you know, we follow our rules and we follow the guidance of our attorney. So with that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Coffee.
Well, I got a lot to say. So as most of you or some of you know, I am part of a little youth program, all the West Sacramento Bears, football and cheer, and we meet at River City High School pretty much every day. It feels like I'm there all the time. It's up on I'm in here. But I can say by being there, I am talking to a lot of community members. So I'm hearing everything. And so I've been asked to say a few things, which I'm going to do. So first off, community schools, yes, it was a lot of people. The flyers definitely kind of were a little bit misleading, and people thought they were going to get backpacks. Drawstring, yes, they go on your back, yes, they compact stuff, but those are not considered backpacks. As well as they were confused as to the uniform, like, what's going to be handed out? We didn't even know that our school district did uniforms. So it was kind of like, that was on the flyer. So we need to make sure we are being very, very clear with what it is that we're sending out to our community members because they're reading that and they're going to be holding us accountable as, well, that's what you said. So let's not be misleading in those areas. So that was one of them. Another thing that I get talked about a lot is definitely classroom sizes. You know, I'm hearing my teachers, this is the first year that I've had the max amount of kids in my classroom. Oh my goodness, what am I going to do? And I'm a special education teacher. We don't have enough paras, we don't have enough this. What are we doing? We've already let go of some teachers that were good teachers. I mean, I'm hearing all of it. And just so y'all know, we are trying our best to fill those positions. We have those 60 teachers, as you said, you know, brand new. I hope we are giving them that support in their first three years. As a brand new teacher, so many years ago, BITSA was probably the only support that I got, and that was what, once a month onsite? My principal didn't come and visit me. So I need to make, I would like to make sure that our support that we're giving is true support. It's not just, we said it here, but then when we go out there, it's not that. Not trying to be a bearer of bad news, just this is what I'm hearing. Talking about Yolo, social workers, I don't know if you guys know that there's only a social worker there one day a week and that they share that social worker with other school sites. Yes, they have counselors, yes, they're a small school, but they are pretty much our tier-three type of students. So they're the ones that really need it. So let us try and figure out, how can we give them what they need? We seem to have somebody who came over for, you know, advocate, like, that they can be able to help. Is that something that's feasible? Is that, you know, this miracle university? I don't know. But it'd be good to know, what can we do for those kids, students, young adults that are about to go out into the world and become citizens who will be doing, making decisions? So we do need to look at what's happening and not just look at numbers. Because if we're looking at just numbers alone and we're not looking at the specifics of what those numbers entail, then we're really not looking at what our schools have. Sorry. I'm just saying, like, there's 107 kids at Yolo. One social worker once a week is not enough. That's just me. On another note, yes, thank you to all those employees who are out there cleaning those fields. Trust me, we appreciate it. Who are cleaning the bathrooms, who are making the facilities great and beautiful for the teachers who are going to be coming in. And thank you to the teachers who are out there getting their classrooms ready and prepared for their classroom where they're, I know, it's daunting to have a classroom of, I'm not sure what your max is right now, 32? I remember having a max of 34, being the only sixth grade teacher. So I feel your pain in having no aide. So I'm rooting for y'all. So that's what I got to say, I'm rooting for y'all. On another note, too, tomorrow, Otter's ambassadors over at Riverbank, those little leaders are fifth graders. I know because my boy is one of them. Wishing all those teachers the best of luck because you're getting them ahead of time. So prep them in the way so that they can be better for the next. So that is all that I have. Like I said, this is what I'm hearing. I didn't want them to think, not even them, like, just my communities, like, I hear you, I hear what you're saying. And we're going to do good, we're going to do better because I believe that we can. I really do. That's what I got.
All right, thank you. The community schools event yesterday was very special. It was a wonderful energy and it's true, families came from all over. I asked them, you know, what school that they were, their homeschool, and truly from all over our city. And it shows that we do have needs all over our city of serving our kids. And as we talked about that, too, community schools is the community is driving that. What is your need? What is your need? This isn't adults or people up here saying, here's your need. This is coming from within our community. And, and it's important that, that that is done and that, and that everyone feels heard in the process. And so it was really beautiful yesterday and I loved hanging out too at that haircut booth and seeing everybody get their haircuts. There were some who, I know we had the, our great partners at the Yolo Children's Alliance did the backpack giveaway. There were some who didn't get it there in the past. What has happened is some of the extra backpacks from there were given to school sites and outreach specialists passed them out. So I was going under that assumption when I did talk to a few families who said, we don't have a backpack right now. And I said, oh, ask your school site, the outreach specialist. So if I am wrong in that or that was not right information, then just let me know. Or even I'll go help get some more of those for kids. But most of them told me that they are ready and had everything that they need and were prepared, which was really exciting, thanks to the event with the Children's Alliance and then this Community Schools event. It was really special to see kids already have smiles and say, yeah, I will be ready. I will be ready for school. And then there is, there's a lot of work that's been happening, just even to make that event yesterday happen in terms of the groundskeeping and the custodial and all of the other pieces. We have phenomenal work happening across the district with people who are just pouring their heart into that work. And it is seen and it is appreciated. The City Two by Two officially, Tracy Pasati and I are, are on that along with the mayor and also council member, Sapiel Hole. Does she go by her full last name? Okay, yes, Sapiel Hole. So we talked yesterday, it was really just a time for us to give direction that our staffs could begin talking with one another about possible opportunities for land swaps. We know it's our most valuable commodity that we have. And we also know that, that there are some spaces that are being used jointly and being used very well jointly. And there are some spaces that really the city is using and not our school district. And so how can we leverage what we have for our needs and make sure that we're doing right for the community? And possibly a land swap might be one way to do that. And so we gave direction to have that conversation with, for our school district leaders to have that conversation with the city. They also spoke about, the city is working to have electronic cars. Am I blanking? There you go, charging stations put in throughout the city. And so we talked about the need to communicate very closely with the school district on that because we have opportunities, for example, you know, at the rec center at River City High School, we have, we have a lot of employees in our district and we also serve a lot of folks who are driving. And so partnering on that too, with, again, with our land and talking about where that could be used strategically. The district should be in that conversation and they acknowledge that for the future and for future grants. Our next meeting, we will be debriefing the summer programming. We did a lot of fantastic summer programming that was all at no cost to families. The city also does a lot of summer programming. And so we talked about, we'll do an update on that once we're able to collect all of our data. They're getting all theirs together. And then as it was said, yes, an update on safety. Some members of the two by two felt that that included also our trails and getting to school as well as our behavior threat assessment and ensuring that our schools are safe places for students and for staff. So that goes into that. The next I'm going to address now instead of in a future board agenda item, and that is the ad hoc. I apologize, I was virtual last meeting. I planned my trips around our school district agenda, our board agendas, but it was changed in July. So I was not in, in a space to address it where I was and it was not agendized. But I'm going to do it in my board comments. So what this was speaking to Vice President Wong asked for us to talk about the two by two meeting that is happening with our labor partners. And that is not actually a board committee. And so if you look at our bylaws, number 9130 on board committees, it gives a definition of what that is and what the legislative body is. And that is not what we're doing. So Clerk Coffey and I have met with our CSEA labor leaders and we have also met with our WSTA labor leaders. And the goal of those conversations, we heard at the beginning of last school year that some felt that they were not being heard by our school board, particularly our school board. And so it was an opportunity to build relationships and have positive conversations and make sure that, that people feel heard. With that said, it's not a board committee and any board member can of course speak to our labor partners. And it's done in a situation where there's two of us, which means if there's a conversation that comes up, I can't then talk to another trustee, but they certainly can speak to. And so in the last conversation, we did have recently with CSEA and what was shared publicly today in public comments were the majority of, of what was also shared with us in that conversation that you heard today. And conversations around making sure that there's transparency around the, like, Community Schools funding and things like that. So I think that what would be helpful is if in our board comments, if we commit to you that we will share an update of when we meet and just briefly what is said as well for transparency on our end. Okay. And then also, I am a member of WesAC Play, which is a nonprofit here in our city and our goal is working, we partner with the city to have shade structures across the city. And so we have an event that is coming up on September 8th. If any of you would like to attend or the community, it is a fundraiser for us as we work to add shade structures. And we are being strategic with the city to make sure that shade is going into parks all throughout. So they have grants and we come in and we support them as well with those. So I'll share some information over email as well with you. And then lastly, I did want to speak to the fact that I had been absent from our special board meeting and some of the events that I would typically be at. And my, just my favorite guy in the whole wide world, my stepdad. I'm so lucky to have a beautiful blended family. My father, my stepfather were wonderful partners in helping us raise our girls. And my girls had Grandparent Day every single week of their life with my stepdad, Jeff Pramundo, who unfortunately passed away from cancer just recently. So I was not able to be with you all, but I was able to be with him. And we were able to say goodbye and have our time together, which was very important. And I appreciate having that space to do that. I did want to share that Jeff, his roots go back to West Sacramento way beyond mine do. His favorite memories were of his grandparents and his time with his grandparents. They had a farm right on the edge of Bright, his Portuguese grandparents. And he spent a lot of time there with them as well as his Irish grandparents on the other side of the river. And he always said he wanted to be a grandparent just like them and be involved with his, with his grandkids. And he was the best of the best. He was a journalist and a reporter, holding people accountable as we talk about here. And he was also in retirement, he worked with Cottage Housing. He was on the Board of Cottage Housing, which helps the unhoused. And it helps them to have job security and then to get job skills so that they can go back into the workforce. And when they were struggling financially, he stepped in and was the CEO with no salary to help make sure that they survived, survived and made it through. And they are still a thriving organization as well as the Sacramento Library. He was the board on that and helped make the beautiful building that we have just across the river. So just one of the best humans I know in the whole world and I appreciate the time to be away and to spend with family. And thank you for indulging me and letting me share a little bit about him. Okay. So with that, that will take us into our future board agenda items. We have our board study session on the Brown Act. And we have that down for August, but truly with everything going on in personal lives, we'll see when we make that. It might have to be September. And then we have our update on the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, the CAS. That will certainly be in September, that is an annual update. And then we have our board self-evaluation. This board did agree to move forward with the CSBA tool, the online tool evaluation, get that report and then see about coming in with a facilitator. And then I am going to remove the ad hoc because it is not a board, is not a board committee. Are there any other future agenda items? Okay, well with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting and enjoy the little bit of time we have. I know kids are getting really excited to get back to school. And I hope everybody has a wonderful start. And I love that idea of making sure that people come in fresh and we want them to go home as well. So we are adjourned.